It's called order.
Heavenly Father, we come at this hour before the throne of grace. We come on God just thanking you because you have been so good to each and every one on the side of my voice. You have blessed us both individually and collectively. Where's your God that you crown every department head, everybody that's in the city of Bastrop with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, so we can continue the work, the task that's set for us? We ask thee blessing all, Beth, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty just as all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, please, for... Who's that? Charles A., no, District A, Charles William Murphy, father of airport manager Brent Elton. Thank you. We had another one, didn't we?
Oh, we have a resolution for Ms. Boo Robinson that passed away. We have that already on the agenda. If you want, you can take time to do that.
Thank you.
Roll call to determine a quorum.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Present.
Ah, present, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. We are not being televised live tonight, live. Mr. Floyd, you know, last time I see it, Ed, and I was telling all my business and found out after I told my story that we were on TV, so I want you to make sure. Okay. Thank you so much. Good evening. I want to welcome you here to this meeting of the mayor and the board of Alderman. We've taken care of the roll call, right, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Have just a few announcements, don't have a whole lot of them because we have really been busy working on our next State of the City address. But we have a special visitor here with us tonight, and I'm going to give him the opportunity to be introduced, and if he's not too shy, he's here with his dad, I'm going to give him a few minutes at the microphone. Now, we'll warn you, Andrew, that this meeting is being recorded. It will be on the website. So within about forty-eight hours, you'll be able to go to the Bastrop website and click on a March meeting and find yourself. But I am so very proud of Andrew. I have nominated him for a legislative endeavor. He shadowed me one day, all day, went to all the departments, went to police department, fire department, Public Works, sewer plant, and became familiar with the whole nine yards. He even sat in my chair and pretended to sign some documents. But he is a special student because he has a special interest in government, and I just want to encourage him as much as possible. Then he also worked at no expense for Representative Katrina Jackson, did an internship with her. So I am pleased to recommend Andrew for the Legislative Youth Advisory Council, and we have nominated him, and I'm going to introduce him to you, and I would like to ask his father if he would join him at the microphone and give Andrew an opportunity to make his first public speech. State your name, the school, your school, what grade you are. His father is Mr. Charles Watson.
Hello, my name is Andrew Watson. I'm a junior class of... I'm going to turn you around. Yes, sir. I would like to thank the mayor and all the council members and everyone here. I really do not have much planned, but I would also... But I would... I really do not have much planned to say today.
That's okay. Your interest, you really like government.
Yes, ma'am. It is a great honor to be nominated for this, to be nominated, to be, just be nominated to be a member of the L-Y-A-C, the Louisiana Youth Advisory Council or Council, and... Just a tremendous honor that is. I do have an interest in government, local, state, and federal.
We're extremely proud of you, Andrew. Andrew likes to read a lot. He does a lot of research, and it is so amazing, the strategies that he has and how he's able to sort out information, and I really think he has a very promising future. Would you introduce your dad, Andrew?
Yes, ma'am. My father is Charles Watson.
As you can see, Andrew is a great, splendid young fellow, and I think he have a great future ahead of him. Each and every day, he gets up and he go brainstorming, and he come up with such wonderful ideas. And so I think that eventually he will put those to use.
Right.
And we would like to thank the mayor also for, you know, nominating him, and you won't be disappointed, I guarantee you that.
Thank you.
So thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Aye.
Best wishes, Andrew. Don't forget us when you get high ranking up there. Let's give him another applause. Whenever I see an opportunity, and I get a lot of emails all the time, I see possibilities for grants. Sometime I know that we don't fit into those criterias, but I want to assure you that with every ounce of information that I get, if I see a grant that has potentials for the city of Bastrop, I'm going to explore it. And this came across my desk for Andrew, and immediately I knew Andrew was a perfect fit for this nomination because I personally had an opportunity to allow him to shadow me, and I know that he's worked for Katrina, Representative Katrina Jackson, at no charge. So we're extremely happy to support our young people. And I'd like to also announce, as you recall, last month, we gave two of our officers plaques because we wanted to celebrate in our own way, regardless of the outcome of what happens at the Department of Justice for the Congressional Badge of Bravery. But the chief and I did receive information that those two applications have moved to the next level, and I'm very, very excited about that. And again, no matter what happens, they will remain winners in our sight because we have already celebrated what they did, and so appreciative of the Bastrop Daily Enterprise for giving them that front-page courage, some coverage. Having no money to really give raises, we have to find other ways to really boost the morale of our employees. So recognition of jobs well done is one of those means. Chief Black, you have submitted a grant. I'll let you come and talk about your grant that you submitted under this announcement section.
I actually submitted two.
Oh, that's right.
I submitted one today.
The one today and the other one that the professor from the...
The one today was Louisiana Highway Safety Commission.
Okay.
We submitted one of those. It's enforcement, public safety, occupant restraints, and impaired drivers. It was submitted, today was the deadline, we submitted it, and we should hear something. We might not get everything we asked for in it, but I expect to get at least a portion of it. Then there was another one, and I can't think of the name of it, it's a federal grant for specialized policing, or what they were trying to do is, in this time, these times where funds are low, they're trying to come up with programs or techniques that departments can initiate and use and continue to do, you know, to maybe attack a certain problem in the city. And this grant would target robberies, burglaries, and actually encourage public involvement in the prevention of crime. So it was all tied together, and that was submitted to the Department of Justice. So they did, we did get confirmation that we received it, they received it, so we're just waiting on some, when they start awarding these grants.
Thank you, Chief. Let me read a letter to you that was passed on to me from the chief. Dear Chief Downey Black, I'm writing to you to commend your police officer Sergeant Jackson, Captain Dennis Aswell, and Sergeant Gerald Bowley while visiting your city. My son stopped at a convenience store with a baseball team. He had a cell phone stolen while he was there. These officers went above and beyond their call of duty to recover his stolen property. We had to call the officers on two different occasions. Each time, their response time was under one minute. They acted in a professional and upstanding manner. They investigated the case and had it solved within twenty-four hours. We have since received our property back. You should be extremely proud of your police department. The dispatches and officers were highly helpful and very polite. As a citizen, I appreciate all that your officers do, and I felt like they should be recognized for their performance. I will surely feel safe when driving again. Thank you, Lori Tindall. We appreciate letters like that. Chief Black, I trust you have followed up and acknowledged and passed on this information to the two officers. The State of the City will be held on the twenty-sixth at the Bastrop Municipal Center. This year's theme will be celebrating the spirit of pride and progress of the city of Bastrop, of which we are extremely proud, of the many accomplishments. As I see it here, in a new courtroom that has been fully restored with energy-efficient lighting, new seating that meets the ADA compliance, new carpeting, and as well as you look on the exterior, we're nearly complete with the exterior painting. Was real pleased with the contractors that perform the duties. They have a little bit more work to do, and we're taking a look at the planner out there. There are some structural problems with that, so we've got to analyze what we need to do because I think some free routes have something to do with the reason that concrete is coming up. Isn't that right? Mr. Berry, you want to come and talk about, you've kind of taken a look at that, you want to talk about that a little bit? Am I putting you on the spot? You feel a little bit, I am putting you on the spot. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, but come on up. We're not being televised, just know it'll play back in forty-eight hours.
Okay. I was talking, we was talking, Ms. Marine, we were talking, like we kind of went out and kind of looked at it, and I got Mr. Robinson, Sam Robinson, supervisor down at the street department, and we determined it's a root going up under the concrete. So maybe when the painters get through or whatever, we can kind of maybe kind of just cut it out, remove the concrete and raise up and cut the root, and maybe what we're going to do, the contract work on the planner, kind of, we have bricks down to the building down or whatever, and kind of submit it back in or whatever, and it should be good to know.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Johnson is doing a tremendous job in his interim position as Public Works Director, and very conscientious, and appreciate the job that you're doing. Mr. Brown, Chief Brown, interim Chief Brown, you're going to check on the capacity, seating capacity, as we want to update. Where's the plaque, Ms. Goldman?
It's on the door, I think.
Okay. You're going to take care of the seating capacity. Did you have any updates you wanted to provide with us? Microphone floor is all yours. Oh, okay. It's like that, huh? But also, I appreciate the job that Mr. Chief Brown is doing. In fact, he had to go and respond to a situation at the school where somebody got stuck in the elevator, and I thought, I don't take elevators if I can avoid it. You know, sometimes you can't get around, you've got a lot of floors, but if it's two or three floors, I work my knees, they can endure that. So thank you for the job that you're doing. And one of the other things that I really just need to shout off the top of the roof, and Mr. Bowles, our bond attorney is here with us, is the credit rating of the city that is phenomenal, and he has, Mr. Bowles has attended both our leadership supper and lunching to let the public know that this administration has done extremely well under the circumstances that we have, we were inflicted with when I took office. So I'm very pleased at having an A-plus credit rating. I signed a proclamation today for Retired Teachers Day, and present for that signing were Kay Arthur and Gladys Davis. So if you see a teacher, say thank you because they play such an important role in our lives. Also, the city of Bastrop will be hosting a branding meeting in conjunction with CenturyLink. I had the pleasure of attending a meeting about a week ago, and CenturyLink is about to really, really make a major investment in this area. I'm working on some things with Senator Francis Thompson, but also I was asked to host the branding meeting. Ms. Kay King, did you get any communication from us on that?
Not yet.
Not yet, it's coming. We're going to host the meeting. We have a golden opportunity before us to really define our area and just not be defined by somebody else, but to promote the amenities that we have to offer in this community. With Bastrop being the next largest city to Monroe, I feel a certain obligation to really shout off the rooftop and let everybody know where we are. Are there any other announcements? Ms. Goldman, can you think of anything else I need to?
No, ma'am.
With that being said, that concludes my announcement, and I look forward to seeing each of you at the State of the City. We will have a video presentation highlighting the accomplishments and employees. Item number four, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Item number five, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes, regular meeting February fourteen, twenty thirteen, and special meeting February twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I hear two movements by Mr. Locke and Mr. Moore.
I second.
And second by Mr. Locke. Okay, so we'll record that Mr. Moore. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Finance Committee Report Resolution thirteen dash fourteen eighty-nine, Bills and Claims for the Month of February twenty thirteen. I'll entertain a motion from Mr. Locke.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution thirteen fourteen eighty-nine, Bills and Claims for the Month of February two thousand and thirteen.
Properly moved by Mr. Locke.
I second.
And second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Resolution thirteen fourteen ninety-two, commending Ms. Bueller Boo Robinson for her outstanding citizenship and service to the city of Bastrop.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. ...
Second.
And second by Mr. Locke. Was it Mr. Locke?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any questions, discussions? I will pause for a minute. I attended Ms. Robinson's service and also Mr. Moore, and was asked by the family to read the resolution, so I had an opportunity to just talk about her life a little bit. And I'll often think about her service to her community for six years, so let us keep her family in our prayers as they go through these challenging days of getting accustomed to her physical absence here. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Sometimes I don't know which part of my bifocals that I'm looking through. Item number eight, Resolution thirteen dash fourteen ninety-one, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the State of Louisiana Department of Culture, Recreation, and Tourism Division of Historic Preservation fiscal year twenty twelve thirteen, certified local government sponsorship of Louisiana Trust for Historic Preservation Conference, National Main Street Conference. Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, this is a grant through the State of Louisiana. It's designed to train Main Street managers to get their certification. There's different classes, different towns host these events. We're out zero money. Matter of fact, they have a little money set aside, I think it's around two thousand dollars that the city actually makes by me writing the checks and mailing them. So this is a grant, I think this is our third or fourth year that we've done it, so we just ask that y'all entertain the approval of this.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion on this resolution as presented.
So move.
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by, was it Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, Resolution... Let me go back and just add a little statement. The Main Street, the color theme that we selected for restoring the city hall is a Main Street color theme, which is timeless, very conservative colors that will just not date it with something like the seventies, but will transcend time. Item number nine, Resolution thirteen dash fourteen ninety-three, granting preliminary approval for the city of Bastrop, State of Louisiana, to issue and deliver taxable sales tax refunding bond series twenty thirteen in an amount not exceeding six hundred eighty thousand dollars, all in the manner provided by Chapter four dash A of Title thirty-nine of the Louisiana Revised Statute of nineteen fifty as amended and other constitutional and statutory authority supplemental thereto, making application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission for approval of said bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Mr. Bill Bowles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor and counsel, and Madam Clark, counsel, Bill Bowles from the Bowles Law Firm in Monroe. What we have before you tonight is a resolution seeking the preliminary approval to go in front of the State Bond Commission, to get their approval. Anytime you borrow money, have to go in front of the Bond Commission, and what are we going to the Bond Commission for? We're asking them to consider allowing us, if we get the right rates in the market, which I have every reason to believe we will, to refund the debt, the two thousand six certificate of indebtedness that was used to help finance the improvements for your Super Walmart. That was, and if you recall, some of you recall that what we did then was, we agreed with Walmart that we would, that we would come back and use the additional monies, the sales tax monies, to pay that debt back. So it really was, they helped us do the financing, but we did it at where it was structured that the first half of these certificates that were refunding were done at zero interest, and then it just recently started to bear interest at five percent. And so we believe that for the remainder of the five or four-plus years of these certificates, we can go in the market and get a rate of, we've had expressions of interest from the local banks that not to exceed a little less than four percent. We think we can do even better than that, as you mentioned, Mayor, the cities, the strength of the cities, S and P rating lets us do that and get very favorable rates. I can't tell you what I think that the savings would be, I really don't want to even say that, but I'm hopeful that we can save some pretty good money over what we're paying now. It's a short term, so it won't be a huge amount of dollars, there's only, there's less than five years, but you know, anytime you save money, that could mean another police car, it could mean another employee or something like that. And so, you know, we try to bring that to you, and a point that we work, the, me and Mr. Nasaka work very cheap, we try to help this facilitate the city and do that, so we knock monies off what would be the customer, it's not really a whole lot, but I do this to try to help out the city. So we'll be back with you after we go to the Bond Commission next month, and come back, and we'll have a look, we'll go to the banks, and we'll see what we can come up with.
Thank you.
So that's what this is. Just to, if it's not committing you to move forward, we'll have to bring it back to the council and talk to you about what the rates are and the savings before we get it approved.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Bowles, and thank you for being so supportive to the city of Bastrop. You've supported us with our mayor's prayer breakfast, you've supported us with our State of the City. Each year, we're making that an annual event, and certainly appreciate all the work you do, and especially saving us that eight hundred thousand dollars over the life of the sewer bonds, and can't say how much I appreciate you enough from this podium.
We enjoy being in Bastrop and helping out the city.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for letting us serve you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to, oh, we need to take action on that, didn't we, Sandra? At this time, I will entertain a motion on Resolution thirteen dash fourteen ninety-three, based on the information as presented by Attorney Bill Bowles.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore.
I second.
And second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, Resolution thirteen dash fourteen ninety-four, declaring adjudicated property located at six twenty Paradise Drive, Bastrop, Louisiana, formerly owned by Dvorjean Homes, no longer needed for public use, authorizing the sale of the property by obtaining sealed bids, authorizing the employment of Philip Lester, attorney-at-law, to provide the legal services for the sale of the property for the minimum bid of the appraised amount, cost of appraisal, and legal services in coordination with the law. Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, we had an individual that expressed a desire to purchase this property. This gentleman actually owns property, I think he lives right beside it. It has a structure that has fallen in, and it's undesirable, and it was adjudicated to the city. The time has lapsed for the owners to come back and redeem it. So we talked to him about it, and he still expressed a desire to do that. So we just need your consideration to declare it surplus, that it's a va, no value to the public, and then we will go before all the process to advertise it, to give everybody the same opportunity to bid on it. Then once the bid comes in, then we'll come back to you and let you know the bids, and you will approve that. And if you approve it, then we can get Mr. Lester to draw up the legal paperwork to sell it.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Goldman. At this time, I will entertain the motion on Resolution thirteen dash fourteen ninety-four.
I'll make that motion, Mayor. I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Armstrong.
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, Ms. Kay King, Morehouse Economic Development. I have another name, I don't, did we communicate with Ms. King on the names?
No, ma'am, we haven't. We wanted to be sure she was willing.
Okay. We're checking. We think we've got a good lead, though.
All right. Thank you. We always appreciate the cooperation that we get and support from the city of Bastrop, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I've just got a couple of short announcements. We move along pretty fast tonight. But ULM had approached our office about having some set scheduled counseling services. So we're going to do small business counseling by ULM Department of Small Business Development, and they will be in our office, and this is easy to remember because it's the second Tuesday of every month, same night as the council meeting. And we will, they'll be in the office from 1:00 to 4:00 on a regular schedule so that people that are interested in starting a business won't have to drive to ULM. Sometimes I have people come in, hand it out, so we're going to have this on a set schedule so people can fit that in to their schedule. And on the Tuesday night before that, on April 9th, at the visitor center, we will have a two-hour from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for individuals that are interested in starting and financing a small business. And I think having this at night may allow some people that might be interested. So we're going to be posting this and getting information out, and to try to encourage entrepreneurship, and I know the mayor's had some efforts on that, too, and so we just want to continue to get out in the public and encourage people that have ideas to come and present their ideas. And I know, you know, we continue to try to market the buildings, and I know we do have a person that just located in the industrial park in the spec building, Mr. Bob Johnson with Cross Connection Consultants, and he seems very pleased, and I think that everything's going along well with that. I believe he's going to bring a lot of people into the city, some of his programs that he deals with, these water devices that they install. So that's gone along very well. And I just kind of want to report because I know that the Ditto Building has always on everyone's mind, and we continue to get calls, and that's why I'd like to encourage you that we are continuing to get calls, and because of the efforts that were done last year, you know, we have a fairly recent appraisal, it's getting a little bit older. We have that property put on the industrial inducement track, economic development track. But we did get a call, and I happen to have a cost estimate that someone had presented to me by contractor for someone that had been interested in it in the past, and I called the contractor and I updated that. So he had $2 million in there to rehabilitate the building and had everything listed on it, it was a pretty good preliminary cost estimate. And we did have an inquiry, and I was able to give all of that information to a real estate person who was looking for a building. And we do have inquiries, there are not that many 150,000-square-foot buildings, and even with $2 million of construction improvements to bring that building back up into a usable state, it's still a bargain at $15, $16 a square foot to really get that building in shape, to put it back into use. So I just, I know it's, sometimes it's difficult to find tenants for a large building like that, but I just want to let the city know and the citizens know that people are still looking at that building, and it's not just sitting there, and we are trying to market it and are getting inquiries.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Any other questions on anything?
I have one.
Okay. Mr. Armstrong?
What is it? Drax?
Drax.
Drax? Update on Drax?
Drax. They are still, they, they're up there, they've cleared some, some channel kind of, I don't know what you call it, like there are strips in there, I'm not sure exactly. They have talked to me within the last two weeks, they're really crunching their last numbers, I guess, on this project. There doesn't seem to be anything that's wrong. They have signed their 10-year fiber contract with Plum Creek, they have signed a contract with the port in Baton Rouge to take the wood pellets. They had a plant that was starting in Glossner, Mississippi. The Glossner, Mississippi plant started a couple of months late, so that's kind of thrown this project a couple of months late. So everything seems to be going along on schedule. We'd like to see them get started, we'd like to see that activity in the community because activity generates sales taxes, and we would, a lot of our construction projects kind of finished up, kind of all at the same time, and we're anxious to get another construction project going.
I have one, Ms. King. The project on Daisy Street, is on time or is it delayed by weather?
Let me address that, Mr. Johnson. No, the project on Daisy Street is going along in a very timely manner, and expect that he will be able to turn key on it at his initially projected date. So everything is fine with that project.
Yeah. And we have another couple of small businesses that are looking, we have a kind of a medical-related business that's looking to go in there in, around the Popeyes area, and I don't think there's anything real confidential about it, but we're continuing to have people look, and sometimes it takes a long time by the time people get through trying to get all their permits, and so these things kind of drag on, they seem to drag on, and that's why we try not to release a lot of information on things before it looks like it's going to happen because the public gets like, well, when is that going to start? But everything seems to be going along on track, and I'm still very positive, optimistic that we're continuing to attract businesses, and hopefully we can continue that in the parish. We've had one major announcement every year since we did the redevelopment plan. We've had Digi Foods, Kennedy Rise, and now the Drax. So when you look at, we're four years out from the announcement of the mill closure. It took us about a year to get that redevelopment plan done. So I think that we're really on track with that and making progress.
Thank you so much, Ms. King. We have gotten some preliminary approval from EDA, and I have sent Mr. Kelsey short a message. If you talk to him, have you spoken with him recently?
I have not, I've spoken with him about the Drax project, but I have not spoken to him about that.
Okay. If you talk to him, let him know we really need to talk with him. EDA has given us the green light on the projected updates to make at the industrial site.
Okay.
So we really don't want Kelsey involved in the next conversation, and we'll send out an email in that respect.
All right.
Okay.
I will be, I'm sure I will be talking with him.
Okay. Thank you so much. I am very encouraged by our city equally as well, and as I so often say, Ms. King's job involves a lot of details, a lot of work, a lot of research, and I guess it's kind of like the analogy with a grant, you have to search out every aspect, and in the end you may or you may not get it, but at least we have the obligation to try. We're extremely proud of the, the New Dollar Store is near opening, that's in Mr. Locke's district down on the west end of town. I've spent a lot of time trying to really work on that particular area of town. It's an older section of town, a lot of families have moved away, and I appreciate our partnership with Keep More House Beautiful. They have worked tirelessly to take down abandoned properties, and I received some communication today on some that they are planning to take down in that particular area. Also, I work with Dean Blackett and the PAC Agency that he is CEO of. We have submitted a grant, and we're still waiting a word for that, for brownfield money to do some studies in that area to try to coordinate every resource possible to work on the west corridor of town. Also, I personally wrote two grants, don't know what happened to the first one, was the Delta Regional Authority, I really think is going to go into some reallocation, and I did get some word to defend it because it was kind of away from the original plan, but I tried to make it fit what we needed. And that's another problem with grants, they come to you with specifics, and if what your need is doesn't fit that, you have to find a way to be creative to at least get their attention. And also, we submitted another grant application through the philanthropy with FEMA, and it's my understanding, I did get some word back on that, they received 2,000 applications for a certain pot of money. But I want you to know, we will continue to submit applications. We have a partnership with Morehouse Parish School System, they have made application for the 21st century, and I did include our staff, our police, our fire, public works, our zoning people in on that grant, and I wish them well and hope that they will get it because it certainly will be a help to the city. Also, in Mr. Johnson's district, the Daisy Street project with the housing, Mr. Steve Perry has been a joy to work with, and it's my understanding there may be another development coming up in that particular area, Mr. Johnson, and at a later date when I get some more information about that, I'll be more than happy to share it. Also, we have to be mindful, and I have had dialogue with Dr. Knopfler, there will be a significant shift in population in the District B with the influx of housing in that particular area. Those units that I expect to turn key on this fall with Mr. Perry's, and then another unit coming in, then we have a historic project right down the street from us. So that changes the population, so we want to always keep the school system aware of when there's going to be an influx of student change in a community. I believe I've covered everything, and I know we have a short meeting, and if you want me to go on and on, I will, but if you're tired, you better go home, I'll bring it to an end. Bring it to an end. Mr. Johnson. But let us continue to be encouraged by the progress of the city as we are a city of spirit, pride, and progress. If there's no other discussion, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
May I make that motion?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.